All right, I think we're at time, so I'm going to call to order this meeting of the Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners. This is our staff meeting. It's November 10th, 2020. We have, from my perspective, a pretty exciting agenda because we're going to be talking about the budget. I think we all like a good budget, and I think we've got a good budget. So before we get to that, though, we're going to do a proclamation, and Commissioner Parks, I'm going to turn this over to you. We have a proclamation in commemoration of Veterans Day.
Thank you, Madam President. I am going to read a proclamation recognizing November 11th, tomorrow, is Veterans Day, whereas members of the United States Armed Forces have defended our country with unyielding courage. In times of need, these brave men and women step forward to answer America's call, leaving behind everyone and everything they know and love. And whereas many of these courageous men and women have faced as well, overcome profound challenges, both physically and emotionally, in defense of our freedom, we need to make sure we support and respect our veterans. And whereas these brave warriors help secure our freedom and democracy with their courage, commitment, and devotion, as we celebrate Veterans Day, we recognize our service members and vow to serve families as well as they serve us. And whereas today, we thank these servicemen and servicewomen who risked their lives for the safety of the citizens of the United States. Now, therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hamilton County, Ohio, does hereby thank, acknowledge, and celebrate our own forces on Veterans Day, November 11th, 2020. And it is signed by all three commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for bringing that to the board, Victoria Parks. Very important. And we obviously, as a county, will be recognizing Veterans Day with a day off for our employees.
That's the recognition.
That's right. Thank you. So our next item is the budget.
Well, one of the common, Commissioner Parks is also a veteran.
That's true. I am a proud United States Air Force vet.
Yes, absolutely. And I was saying earlier that my entire male side of the family predominantly were in the services. So, and that resolution proclamation was absolutely, it hit the nail on the head as far as why we're doing this. So thank you for bringing it forward.
My pleasure. Thank you.
All right, very good. We're going to move on to item number two. It's the budget. We got the budget on Friday, and I just want to, I will be turning it over to Jeff and to John Brugan. But just from the start, I want to say a big thank you to everybody that was involved in putting this together. I know, Jeff, you put a list of thank yous at the back, that kind of the last page of the document, but I wanted to note it at the top of the meeting, because so many people have worked very hard at a very difficult time to make sure that we have a balanced budget. And you also have provided some recognition to the CARES team, who helped allocate the 142 million that we got from the federal government in a way that was really impactful and helpful to people in the community, and then some of the other administrative staff that, without whom we couldn't do our jobs. So really appreciate that acknowledgement, and want to say to you, Jeff, that this budget, I think, is one of, I've been on the commission now for four years, and this is the most optimistic budget I've seen in my time, and I am very grateful that we are, you clearly made an effort to follow a lot of the policy objectives of the board, this board in particular, but also a couple boards past, because we're just building on what we started a number of years ago. And it is, it's very gratifying to know that we're going to pay our employees well, we're going to build our employee base, we're going to get some capital budget items. We are also going to be able to do more by way of economic development, economic inclusion. I mean, you know, there's quite a bit in this budget that is building on the recommendations from this board by way of our policy objectives. So I just really want to thank you for your due diligence towards that, and also putting something in front of us that is a pretty good news budget in a pretty difficult time. So anyways, and I know you're going to talk about some of the cuts that we did right when COVID hit, which allowed us to be where we are, and also the increase that was passed last year that allows us to be where we are. So anyway, with that, I'm going to turn it over to you, Jeff, and/or John, to walk us through the document.
Well, thank you, Madam President. I appreciate it. And just in terms of thank yous, you know, I want to thank the board first. There's nothing harder than to put together a budget when, when policy guidance is lacking or is ambiguous. And we've been really fortunate over the, with this board, and even with the, all the boards, really since I've been administrator, that the, the policy guidance has been fairly, has been very clear, has been, you know, the policy agendas have been very well laid out in terms of what the board was looking for, and that just makes it that much easier to, to draft a budget and hit the mark. I do just want to double down on your thanks to a couple of people. First, most notably, John, for all of his work on this and his staff. You know, they, they start this process back in, you know, in June and July, with the, with the building blocks and the tax budget, and, and starting the work with the departments. You know, we see the finished product that the, or the board and the public sees the finished product at the end, but there's so much detail that goes into this. And I just want to thank them for their hard work. So there's Lisa Anderson, Jen Ketter, Rob Wagner, Rob Wagner, Lisa Webb. There's, there's not a lot of them, really, but it's a really fantastic team, and they do a great job. John, I didn't miss anybody, did I? All right, cool. Okay. So also, we just want to thank the, a few other folks. I want to thank Holly, Holly Christman, Assistant County Administrator, for all of her work coordinating a lot of the, the efforts of many of the board's operational departments, as well as all of her work coordinating the CARES Act programming for us this year, which really, you just can't pull that apart from the budget right now. It's just so intertwined with everything we're doing. I want to thank the other members of the county senior operational team, Frank Spataro, Tim McCartney, Lisa Webb, and Bridget Doherty for all their assistance. I want to thank Teresa Giglio as well for all of her help with, with everything, always. That's always, she, it's always helping to make sure everything happens without a hitch. And finally, the, the department heads and elected officials and administrators of, of our board departments, of our, of all the separate and independent agencies who have helped us this year, really in unprecedented fashion, all the sacrifice that they made, all the, all the sacrifice that all the, all the departments and agencies of the county made to make sure that as we were going through some very turbulent times, that we made sure that this county was going to come out in a better position. And finally, all the staff who really do all the work of the county, you know, and, and the ones who, at the end of the day, get the work done, and ultimately are responsible for that. So thank you, Madam President, for, for your thanks as well, and really just look forward to, to walking through this with you today. So I have a presentation that I'm going to do, that I'm going to try to share my screen here. So Bridget's going to help me a bit, I believe. Let's see, maybe. Bridget, okay, I do have screen sharing ability here. And hold on one second. It is, PowerPoint is not showing up as a, as an option for screen sharing yet. So give me one second. There we go. There it is.
Got it.
All right. All right. So can you all see that?
Yes.
Yeah.
On my screen, it's showing up really small.
Yeah, it's small.
No.
I don't know, I don't know why that is. Bridget, any thoughts? What's going on?
Try the display. If you go in the right-hand corner, just go down right, and then the little display button, maybe that'll open up a little bit.
I'm sorry, where, where's that?
It's the display button to, it's, there's a minus slide bar.
Oh, you know what? Yeah, there we go. Sorry.
Nope. Then maybe hit, hit the, the display right next to it, off to the left. And then there's a left. Yep, you got it. Two, three over. Two over. That guy. Slideshow.
Oh, there we go.
There you go.
Look at that. So everyone see that?
Yeah.
Yes.
It's beautiful.
All right. Back out of that and head back up one. Okay. So thank you for your patience with that. Just a couple of things to walk through today. This is a little bit of the agenda. We're going to do some background. We'll talk about some of the budget goals, which include stabilizing county finances, addressing the board's policy agenda, enhancing operations, making infrastructure investments. We'll talk a little bit about our human capital strategy, and then we'll, we'll wrap up. First, though, just a little, a word on the general fund budget itself. This is obviously highly remedial for many folks watching, but if someone's happening, happening to be tuning in who is not aware of the dynamic of the county, but the general fund budget is the operating fund for the county. It supports mandated and policy-driven functions, and it has to be balanced every year. Commissioner Portune, if you remember, was very fond of saying, you know, we're not the federal government, we can't print money. Our budgets have to be balanced, and that is in fact true. And the county's budget is always, our budget is always balanced. Our budget, the general fund budget supports everything from, from elections to 911 services, to the criminal justice functions, incorporates the jail, the crime lab. So much of what the county does is based in our general fund. The all, it is also only a portion of the all, what we call the all funds budget. The all funds budget would include all of those things, whether it's MSD, or Job and Family Services, our, our various levies. We have various restricted funds that are not included in the county's general fund. So the riverfront, our stadium operations, all of those things are, are separate restricted funds. They are outside of the general fund. There's some programmatic relationships from time to time with the, with these, with the all funds budget. But I just wanted to make sure that people understand that, as we're talking about the general fund, we're not talking about those other things. We're not talking about our transient occupancy tax. We're not talking about Paul Brown Stadium and the banks. This is the core operational functions of the county. And I think it's just important to hit on that. There we go. So I also just wanted to pay a word to COVID-19, because it really is so intertwined with everything that we've done this year. And in particular, I want to just mention, just to hearken back to where we were back in the spring, with what actually happened, and what we saw happen in this country back in, in early spring. We saw in April, industrial production fall by 11.2%. We saw the US lose 21 million jobs over that time. We saw the national unemployment rate go from 4.4% to 14.7%. The S and P 500 lost 20%. So I talked, I lay this out, not only just to, to talk about something significant that the county dealt with during this period of time, but also just to talk in how difficult it was to draft a budget because of some of this, and some of this uncertainty, but also just to point out that I think that the actions that the county has taken over the past several years ultimately are going to pay dividends, even in these highly turbulent times. And we'll get into that here in just a moment. Talked a little bit earlier about the budget goals. So the budget goals were to stabilize the financial condition of the county, address the board's 2021 and 2022 policy agenda, enhance internal operating capabilities, allow for prudent infrastructure investment, and improve our human capital strategy. So the first budget, budget goal is to stabilize the county's financial condition. And I just want to start by saying that, again, this is being done at a time where we have a global pandemic that's really playing havoc with a lot of our economic assumptions and throwing a lot of uncertainty onto revenue streams at the state, local, and even national levels. But despite that, this budget is balanced, it is structurally balanced at 290.7 million. That's an increase of 13.8 million versus 2020, largely due to the additional quarter cent sales tax that was incorporated, or that will be incorporated for, for the first time at a, at a full year in 2021. And I, I do just want to emphasize that without that addition, we would have been facing an additional 36 to 40 million dollar gap this year. We'd be having an entirely different conversation about what this budget looks like. I'm going to talk about some of the investments that, that this budget facilitates. None of that would have been possible. And I don't think that it's a stretch to say that we would be looking at a county making significant reductions across the board, and potentially even looking at some level of fiscal emergency. As it stands, the budget's balanced, and it facilitates a comprehensive response to the board's policy agenda, which we'll get to shortly. In terms of fund, and I'm sorry, I keep having some things pop up here, so I'm sorry if that's distracting. In terms of fund balance, we ended 2019 with a fund balance of $36 million. We are projecting a 2020 fund balance of 44.51 million, roughly 16%. So we're actually able to add to fund balance this year, which is, which is good news. In terms of, of revenue and revenue projections, in 2021, we will be slightly suppressed from where we anticipated revenues to be at this time, in, when we looked at it back in January in our five-year plan. We are looking at sales tax, we're projecting sales tax in 2021 at 122.8 million. That's up from 103.8 million in, in the 2020 budget, due, as previously noted, to the full year incorporation of the full quarter cent sales tax. But it's down from 127.4 million, as was projected in the five-year plan, largely due to the economic consequences of the pandemic. So although we're painting the picture of a stable budget, it is not unscathed, certainly from, from the pandemic. If you follow the, the graph over to the right, you'll see interest earnings at 6.6 million. The five-year plan back in January had this, had interest earnings pegged at around 11 million dollars, 11.1 million. See, again, as a direct result of the economic response to the pandemic. So again, a stable picture in the county general fund, from a revenue perspective, but not unscathed either. So total, in total, back in January, we were projecting revenues of 297, 297 million for 2021. We're now projecting 290. So again, about 7 million down from where we thought we would be. I, I do want to touch a little bit more on sales tax for just a moment. Going back into this year, we had projected a significant downturn in sales tax. We were very cautious in that regard, but at the same time, at, at the time of that projection, if the board will recall, the internal concern was that we might not be cautious enough, or we might not be acting fast enough. So in the end, we did see several negative months in our sales tax performance. In March, April, and May, we saw sales tax drop 10, 16%, 10%, 16%, and 2.5% respectively. But those were shallower dips than what we were expecting. And the other month, in some of the other months, we actually showed pretty strong performance in sales tax. So as we see it now, sales tax is performing better than anticipated as of several months ago. But the question is, will that continue to hold up in an uncertain economic climate? So we'll come back to that in a bit as we talk about risks.
Hey, Jeff, can I, I hope you don't, commissioners, please feel free to jump in with questions as we go. One question I have regarding the sources of revenue. So we understand that sales tax is volatile, especially in the time of COVID. And you mentioned the interest earnings as well. Are any of these other pots impacted in a negative way by COVID? Or would they be if we were to get into a situation here where we're closing stuff down again? What, what is the impact to the other sources of revenue?
Well, I'll, I'll hit that generally, and then ask John if he wants to jump in on this. But, you know, first and foremost, I don't want to gloss over sales tax, because we did not see the dramatic reduction in sales tax with this COVID recession over the spring, thought we would. All we had to go on and to base our recommendations on were what we saw happen back in the Great Recession of 2009 through 2011, when we saw huge decreases in sales tax. So for whatever reason, that did not happen in this particular recession. But to the degree that there is a continuation of the pandemic, and to the degree that, that, that there is an additional downturn that does in fact spur the type of economic decline that would cause an implication to the, to retail activities, I don't want to gloss over the fact that we might see reductions in sales tax.
Yeah.
So that would be the one that would be most harmful, obviously, because it's the most significant revenue stream we have. I think we, you mentioned interest earnings. We've also seen some reductions in court fines and fees, things of that nature, things that are, that are volume driven, as things in the county shut down over the spring, and there was no activity going through the courts. We saw a reduction there. We had not seen a huge reduction in building permits, although I'm hearing in the, in the industry that forward-looking pipelines might be drying up a little bit, as people are a little hesitant about the, the economy board. Hopefully, if we get the vaccine on the street, and that stabilizes things, we'll start to see people gain a little bit more confidence and pick those things up again. John, anything in the, and some of the more detailed revenue streams that you think that we, where you can identify that we have, or that we might see additional revenue softness?
The ones where we've also seen some softness, and they continue to, are where we're seeing state impacts. The local government fund is down, you know, from what we projected this year. We're being cautious with it next year. But, you know, how, given how much of that is driven by income tax, you know, there, there could be further pressure on that going into 2021. We also saw some pullback on public defender reimbursement rates at the state level, although we also are, are seeing less volume there, given so many of the closures in the courts. So we've been seeing less spend in the public defender's office, so less to reimburse in the public defender's office. Those are the other, the other ones that, that really jump out.
Is the local government fund down because it's a percentage of the larger bucket, and the larger bucket is down?
That's correct. The state revenue is down. It's not, it's not down as much as they thought. But I think this is one of those areas where we continue, we, we continue to keep our fingers crossed, because we're, I think everybody was expecting more impact on, say, income tax than what, than what we have seen. We see it indirectly through the local government fund.
Got it. Thank you.
In terms of expenditure detail, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this. There, and we should very shortly have, if it's not already, have the budget posted online. And there's some really good tables in the back in the budget that go on a department-by-department basis. But at a high level, again, we're looking at roughly 76% of the county's general fund budget going towards public safety and judicial functions, around 16% towards general government activities. That's things like the reporter, the treasurer, the auditor, the Board of County Commissioners, things of that nature. 2.7% in Public Works. We've got 2% towards economic development. These, these are, are pretty similar to what we typically see in the county budget, because so much of what we do is mandated in nature. I do also want to point out debt service at around 2.2%, which for a general fund budget of north of quarter, roughly quarter of a billion dollars, is pretty manageable. And I like to see that number staying relatively steady.
Jeff, for the public safety, you were saying 76% of our budget? So that's, how much an increase is that than it was before?
In terms of nominal dollars?
Yeah. No, not, I think it was.
Or in percentage?
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, were you, an increase in percentage?
Percentage, yeah. It was not that high. I don't remember it being that high before, 76% of the, of our budget. I think it was 73, 72, or something like that?
I would have to go back and look at the total, but, but public safety judicial combined has typically been in the 70 to 75% range, something like that. But we can get you the exact number of how it's been here.
Okay, thank you.
The value of being online is that I've got another computer in front of me. So it was 76.4 last year.
Oh, what was it? Do you have the year before, John?
It'll take me a few seconds to, I'll let you know. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
We also, this is a graph that the, the board, I know, became very well acquainted with over the past several years. This was the county's five-year plan as of, back in 2019. This shows the significant structural imbalance that the county faced. That imbalance, that gap between the purple line and the blue line was comprised of known costs, things like wage increases, healthcare costs, contractual escalations, as well as the cost of things that we need, that we knew that we needed to do, and some things that the board, as a matter of policy, had prioritized, given the community needs. So things such as addressing deferred maintenance in our buildings, reducing and stabilizing the 911 detail rate, and investing further in economic development initiatives. All of that fueled that structural imbalance in the, back in the 2019 five-year plan. The same graph for the recommended, a much different picture, and it shows a picture that is relatively balanced for the next five years. We did trim departmental requests by around 20 mil, roughly 20 million dollars to keep those requests in line with what our five-year plan shows as being sustainable. But we're confident that it still enables the performance of our mandated and core services, as well as hitting the policy priorities after many years of chronic underinvestment. I do just want to note before I go on that there, and we'll hit this at the end, but there are a lot of risks that are still out there that could derail this path pretty easily if they were to, if, if they were to come to fruition. So we'll go into that a little bit, but it's going to be incumbent upon the county, I think, in everything we do to maintain the ability to be flexible in our spending, and to be nimble, and to make sure that we can respond quickly if we see some of these risks materialize.
Jeff, does this chart, does that chart allow for the continued investment in people? The continued increases? Is that what the upward trajectory mostly comprises?
I don't know, mostly, but, but it does in fact include general wage increases. It includes assumptions on contractual increases. So yes, those are, those are built into this, this pro forma. Just a little bit about the strategies that we used to stabilize the financial condition. Number one, I talked about reducing requested departmental expenditures, and that's going to be, and I say this in the budget message, the, the primary tool that we're going to be using on an annual basis is just is just frequent and open communication with departments and independent agencies of the county to make sure they understand what the five-year plan is, what we have in terms of revenue constraints, and making sure that we are constantly balancing the expenditures to revenues on a department by department basis and making sure that, that all department heads and elected offices understand what those, what those constraints are. We also, this particular year, used some CARESAC dollars for eligible purposes associated with public safety salary costs. In particular, in some of our levies, we have a couple of levies that incorporate sheriffs, sheriff staffing, and we use CARESAC dollars to help support that. These were levies that were looking as if they might need some sort of support from the general fund. We were avoiding that in major, in a major way by, by allocating CARESAC dollars. So you should keep those levies sustainable so that we can reach the point where we have those back under the purview of the TLRC again. We also, as I stated earlier, we took action to maintain and add to the general fund reserve, which is a, a great way of, of balancing out and, and making sure that we have enough reserve to cash flow and encumbrances and as the county's cash balance modulates over the course of a year, that we have a sufficient cash balance to make sure that we are, that we are constantly liquid in the county. And finally, establishing a stabilization fund. And this is something a little bit different than the general fund reserve. The, the stabilization fund is essentially an account within the general fund reserve that will allow us to do a couple of things. Number one, it allows us to hedge against future economic shocks. It will allow us, if needed next year, to support some additional community supports as it relates to COVID. And it will allow us to continue to cash flow capital projects that the board is looking to do or the county is looking to do and to potentially support restricted funds that may otherwise be struggling under, under the COVID environment. So we had a stabilization fund back in, in the 2006 through 2009 range. We actually closed that stabilization fund out during the recession and just added everything into the general fund reserve. But in 2021, we will start the work of looking to see how much we have available and what that stabilization fund looks like and we'll, we'll set that up formally in 2021. In terms of the board's policy agenda, which was our second goal, I just, I want to go through three primary goals. Obviously, the board's policy agenda includes a plethora of, of activities and priorities. But when we think about those with real general fund implication, I really want to hit on three. And that is establishing a sustainable public safety model, equity and inclusion, and community development and revitalization. Some of the other policy agenda items are sprinkled throughout this budget in different places. Many of them are included in some of our restricted fund budgets in terms of how we go about addressing them. So this is by no means saying that we're only focused on three policy agenda items of the board, but these are ones with significant general fund implication. First, it has been a major theme of the board's policy agenda for some time has been investing in a sustainable public safety model. So one that prioritizes diversion, treatment, reentry programming versus incarceration. And as the board is aware, that requires working in partnership with the courts, with the sheriff, with the prosecutor to ensure that, that those options are available to facilitate that philosophy and working with all of those organizations to make sure that it's, that those options are executed. So to that end, the 2021 budget facilitates activities such as completing the build-out of the 90-bed treatment-oriented expansion of the Justice Center and funding the commensurate staffing with that. It includes completion, the, the construction of the crime lab out in Summit Park in Blue Ash. And again, funding the commensurate staffing associated with that renovated or new facility. It includes continuing funding for the Community Alternative Sentencing Center, which is something the board invested in a year or two ago now. I think it's just completed its first full year of operations. This is really what amounts to a step-down facility so that low-risk offenders can go to a low-security environment out of the justice, outside of the Justice Center so that we can preserve that critical Justice Center capacity for the higher-risk offenders who need to be in that facility. Expanding remote monitoring technologies like electronic, electronic monitoring units, again, to make sure that the people who can be out of the Justice Center are out of the Justice Center and those that need to be in are there. Retaining staffing for our reentry program in the Justice Center to make sure that we are continually focusing on working with the folks that are in the Justice Center to prevent recidivism, to, to stop that revolving door of people leaving the jail and coming right back in. Reducing the 911 detail rate to $5. This is something that has been a priority of the board for a long period of time because that higher detail rate was really spurring communities to want to fragment off and do their own thing, even though they knew that it was not the right thing for public safety. The 911 detail rate was, was eating into their public safety budget so much that some of them felt they didn't have a choice. So lowering that, continuing the lowering of that detail rate to $5 will, in total, given where we were at $16, save communities around 3.1 million in their public safety budgets and also encourage them to stay as a consolidated seamless communication system here in Hamilton County. It will expand our QRT operations. We actually, as the board knows, received a grant for $1 million to expand QRT, Quick Response Team operations into the community on a more, on an expanded basis to make sure that, that people who suffer from an overdose and people who have substance abuse issues are quick, very quickly connected to treatment treatment alternatives. And finally, funding the matching fund requirements for the federal grant received by the, the three-year federal grant received by the Sheriff's Office for a data-driven and community-oriented policing project to reduce gun violence in Lincoln Heights. And there's other things in the, in the, in the budget document itself. This is only a sampling of some of the things, but I just wanted to focus on some of the, some of the major public safety-related initiatives that this budget supports.
Jeff, the gun violence reduction pilot, my understanding after three years, we may have to kick some money in for that program.
So, yeah, we, we are matching right now the federal course. And yes, ultimately, three years down the road, if the program is, is delivering on the metrics that it is designed to deliver on, we should have continuing that program. The federal grant would be gone, but we would continue that program. If it's not working, this was in part of the MOU that we passed with Sheriff's Office, that the Sheriff's Office agreed to eliminate that additional staffing through attrition in the office, if it's not paying dividends ultimately.
Did we incorporate that in our five-year plan, the possibility of having to put some money into that program?
I would have to check with, with John on the, on the, the four and five. The years one through three would include the matching funds.
Sure.
Years four and five would include the, with the, the full load of that amount. But again, it's, I'm quite sure where we'll be in year four and five, assuming we're all going to be optimistic. Absolutely.
Yeah, okay.
I can say the, the five-year plan is, is done on a more, on a, on a more.
Extrapolated basis?
It's assumed that it's simply growth rates for the most part. We don't, we usually don't get to that level of granularity in them.
Okay, so not really specifics like that.
Right, right.
Okay.
There's some big, big stuff coming. We, we would potentially take that into account. For, for the most part, it's done based on growth rates.
Okay, thank you.
Through here. The second area of the policy agenda was enhancing equity and inclusion efforts. So the county opened its Office of Inclusion and Diversity in 2019. Since that time, the office has helped to instill equity and inclusion principles in county departments and has become a, really a leading voice in the community for these efforts. And as the board is well aware, with the, the tragic incident with George Floyd in Minneapolis earlier this year and the, the resulting call for a systemic change, the board responded with a resolution declaring racism a public health crisis in Hamilton County. And responding to that resolution, the 2021 budget includes various programs designed to expand upon the. We have, as first, the, the first bullet here is expanding the Office of Inclusion and Diversity. And this would be through the hiring of a coordinator position to focus more externally as opposed to internally. Right now, the department does a great job of working with departments on processes and hiring and procurement, procurement work. Under the, through the board's guidance, the, the thought was to expand that office to be more external-focused, to really work with underserved and marginalized populations in the county to make sure that those, that those individuals understand how to access the services of Hamilton County. And to do that on a regular basis, whether it is connecting them with Job and Family Services or connecting them to procurement op, options in, in Hamilton County. All of the various resources of Hamilton County, we want to make sure that, that all populations in Hamilton County understand how to work equitably with their county government. The, the policy or the, the budget also supports an economic disparity study as contained in the board's resolution. That's designed to ensure or to assess first that whether changes are needed in procurement policies and practices to address issues of fairness as it relates to minority contractors and procurement. The budget funds the Office of Family Voice. This is a, an office that would be funded through children, that would be reimbursed to the county through children's, the children's services levy, but really is designed to help parents navigate what is really a complex system when you're talking about children's services. So this would be housed under the Office of Inclusion and Diversity, but it would be working with the, with the children, with the broader children's services system to make sure that parents who were really, especially parents entering that system for the first time, understand better how to navigate it. The budget also funds training efforts within Hamilton, the Hamilton County Sheriff's Office related to active bystander training. And that's something that we talked extensively about when the board was passing the resolution. Major Earl Price was on, who walked through the fact that the Sheriff's Office is now have been accepted into a pilot training program through Georgetown College of Law to help train all of the sheriff's deputies and corrections officers in Hamilton County on the, the skills to make sure that if something is wrong in the organization or something is wrong with a particular situation, that it is called out and it's rectified and remedied immediately. So that's a little bit about the equity and inclusion efforts in the, in the budget. Moving on to community revitalization efforts. As the board will recall, with the incorporation of the quarter cent sales tax, the board made it a priority to return some of those dollars back to local communities in the county, particularly those first-string suburban communities to help promote growth and revitalization. We've seen these communities lose population, lose tax base. We've seen increasing crime rates in some of these communities. And the board wanted to actively invest as a partner with these communities to help them be more competitive with outlying, with the outlying suburban counties in, in the region, recognizing that if these communities are successful, the county is going to be successful. So we do that through this, in this budget, through a couple of different programs. I'm just going to list two of them right now. The budget contains a $1.5 million grant for our, for a community development revitalization grant program. This was something that we wanted to kick off earlier this year. Unfortunately, with COVID and the reductions that were made and when we initially responded to COVID, this was pulled back at the beginning of the year. So the, the 2021 budget calls on restoring this. A $2 million allocation for site readiness activities through the port to facilitate the attraction of jobs to Hamilton County and bringing large parcels of land under public control so we have the ability to offer large manufacturers, large employers, sites of, of, of land or tracts of land that they could, that they can locate to in Hamilton County, which is something, as an urban-built-out county, we still continue to trail in terms of some of our surrounding counties, in terms of the inventory of these sites. So that's a little bit about our community revitalization efforts in the, in the budget. Want to hit briefly on a couple of different areas that are more internal operations-focused. It's, you know, not maybe as sexy as talking about economic, or public safety and things like that. But it is nonetheless extremely important to our ability to function effectively as a county. So the budget includes funding for transitioning the county email system to a system that is more secure and modern, which is something we absolutely need to do. It includes funding for departmental review, operational reviews and county purchasing and, and our enterprise IT systems to make sure that in all these areas, we're looking for efficiencies and employing best practices. It creates a new county grants office to make sure that we are leveraging outside grant opportunities wherever possible to fund county programs and also invest in a new record management system in the county justice center, in the Hamilton County Justice Center to make sure that we are at, best using the information in our justice center to make decisions and adequately coordinating with the Hamilton County Courts.
So Jeff, on this one, can I just give a bit of a shout out to the business community who helped us with a review? We, we partnered with them to finance it and some of what we learned was that we trail, as you say, others with an IT system that's, you know, effective and comprehensive. And so this is a response to what we know we need to do by way of some of our infrastructure. And so I just want to thank Gary Lindgren and the CRBC and the CBC for helping us conduct that study and make sure that we were strategically investing in some of these things.
Absolutely. The board is also well aware that we have roughly $290 million of, of deferred maintenance and capital project needs in the county. So this budget enables us to start making some inroads there. It funds critical capital projects such as the Justice Center elevators and fire alarm systems in various buildings to the tune of $6.5 million. It also includes $7.6 million in energy conservation projects, which ultimately pay for themselves through energy savings. It also includes $2 million to address additional smaller-scale deferred maintenance needs. So this budget, for the first time, really begins making inroads in some of our capital needs like we haven't made in probably the past decade. So I'm really, really excited about the ability of, of, of some of these deferred maintenance needs to start to be brought under control by giving facilities the ability to start hitting them much harder. So that's another exciting part of this budget. In terms of human capital strategy, we know that we, this has been a fairly stressful year for people all over this country and Hamilton County, it's no different. You know, we want to do everything we can to continue to maintain what is really our most important asset and that's the people that do the work for, for Hamilton County. The 2020 budget back in January included a more of a comprehensive approach at benchmarking our, our wage scales to market and making those systemic adjustments to make sure that across the board, we were pulling people up closer to market because we know we lag market in several, in many areas. We talked a little bit earlier about the fact that there is still some revenue suppression in the 2021 budget because of COVID. So there's some things that we're just not able to get to and that's unfortunately one of them this year. We're going to keep it on the radar, on the near-term radar. But in the meantime, the budget does allow for a general 3% wage adjustment, which is consistent with what we're seeing throughout the industry. It also affords a 1.5% one-time payment to employees who took the brunt of furloughs during 2020. So any, any employee furloughed for a week or, or longer in the county would be eligible for that 1.5% one-time payment. It also, the budget contemplates the, the switch to a different health insurance partner this year, which is through the RFP work that, that HR, the human resources conducted on behalf of the board. We are looking at, at healthcare costs that are not going up as much as we thought they would next year, which is good news for the county and it's good news for the employees. And we also continue a lot of our benefits programs, including the employee health clinic that we operate through our health.
Can I stop you one more time? So I just want to draw attention to the item or page number 19 of the budget document, which outlines the pay that county employees have received over the last, it's really 11 years, 10 years. And so again, Jeff, big kudos to you and the team for making sure that this budget reflects the need to invest in the people that work for the county and gives that 3% raise. I'm sorry about the lighting here, it's just really a nightmare. But, because we went through five years of 0% increases since 2010. And that is difficult on our, our workforce and our employees. And so we're trying to stabilize here, stabilize the, the budget, but stabilize the people that work for us too. And so again, hats off for this one because I think it's a trend that we should, you know, continue to see in budgets, but it's really important that we send a signal to our employees that we are. It's striking when you look at the, the chart on page 19.
Yeah, we, we unfortunately suffer, continue to suffer from the fact that there was that period over the past decade where we just did not adjust compensate, compensation rates or compensation scales for, for many years. And once you do that, you just can't catch up. So that's something that the 2020 budget contemplated was trying to make up for that amount. We're not there yet, but I'm confident that if things continue to hold, that we may get there. But in the meantime, we're going to do what we can do. And that is making sure that people are rewarded for their efforts and then, and especially the people that took the brunt of the cost cutting this past year, that we find some way to, to compensate those folks for that, for that sacrifice that they made. Terms of budget, I mentioned that there were some budget risks and there always are. And they're very real this year, especially as we're in this cloud of the pandemic. And the, the greatest of these risks is in fact the path of the pandemic and the economy. You know, should this pandemic continue? And, you know, we're hearing good news about the potential for a vaccine. But should that, should that vaccine rollout be delayed? Should this pandemic, for whatever reason, continue significantly into 2021? And should there be an additional economic downturn? There's always the potential that this time it's one that does impact these, our revenue streams more than it did the first time around. I would say that's probably the greatest risk right now associated with this budget is just the general path of the pandemic and the economy. We did not include a lot of, of direct dollars in this particular budget for responding to the needs of a, of a, of another escalation in the pandemic. We are assuming that to the degree that does happen, that there will be more federal aid, federal assistance in that regard. But, but nonetheless, we need to recognize that as a risk. Departmental strains, simply put, we need to work with our departments and agencies to ensure that expenditures remain within budget constraints. And we, we just need to make sure that we're constantly having that communication with departments so that they understand what those constraints are and so that we, we understand the needs of departments so that we can work together to make sure that we stay within balance. We talked a little bit earlier about the health of restricted funds. To the degree we have major restricted funds of the county that are more dramatically impacted by COVID or that otherwise are imbalanced. We, the, the general fund has, has in the past been called upon to support those. So to the degree we have restricted funds that are, that are suffering, that is another risk to this particular budget. And finally, we talked a little bit about compensation disparities. And that's, as, as much as it's a financial potential risk, it's also just an operational risk that to the degree we are losing people who are senior employees, especially in that middle, that middle tier of employees to other competitive organizations, be it in the private or public sector, it's just going to make it much more difficult for the county to, to do what it needs to do in carrying out services when you lose that seasoned middle rank of employees for other opportunities.
And Jeff, I wanted to just mention, I was on mute when the Madam President was talking about the, the 3% entry. And so I think it's just a tribute to your staff, you and your staff, your forward thinking as it relates to trying to do all we can do as it relates to compensation. And I'm thinking outside of the box, you guys thinking about the furlough lord, for, furloughed, I'm sorry, employees, who would have thought of that? But you guys, so just trying to help all of the staff in some way or another within our budget. So I just really compliment you guys on your forward thinking.
Well, thank you. Obviously we have to stay within our means, but wanted to take care of people as much as we can.
Right.
And, you know, as it relates to the risk, I'll, I'll close on the risk just by saying that, you know, I think, as I said earlier, we just are going to need to stay flexible. As it's set up, does give us some options in that, in, from that perspective. If, if we do happen to see these risks materialize, we have the op, we, we have the option of pulling back on some of the discretionary policy options that are in the budget. We have to reduce departmental expenditures. We have the ability to employ the budget stabilization fund as it's, or even fund balance as it's, as it will be set up in 2021. So we will have options, but again, the options start with some cautious and conservative projections. And I think as, as the budget, as John, the budget office have laid out this five-year path, you know, I think we're, we're well set up to hopefully avoid those worst case scenarios. And just one, one final note before I close and summarize. And so while the recommended budget in the presentation shows that the, the, the general fund budget is largely stable, we talked about the fact that it's due primarily to the fact that sales tax has not been impacted as much as, as we thought that it would be, given the economic shutdown that we saw earlier in the year. Had we not taken the action with the quarter cent sales tax, we'd be looking at about a $40 million hole. And this would be an entirely different conversation. In contrast, though, we have other, things are not all rosy. We have, we have restricted funds of the county. For example, our transient occupancy tax fund, which is our hotel motel tax fund, some of which are being significantly impacted from the economic crisis of COVID. And those funds honestly are surviving at this point entirely due to the fact that the county made very prudent decisions along the way in terms of building up fund balance, refinancing debt when, when we had the opportunity and frankly, avoiding spending decisions. I can tell you on the transient occupancy tax, as the county began building up that balance, we were hit annually with different stakeholders approaching the county wanting the county to invest in something that was maybe marginally associated or related to the true, the true use of, of, or purpose of the transient occupancy tax fund. And to the board's credit, the board continually said, no, we're, we're reserving this for big policy goals. And now that balance is preserving that, is preserving that particular fund. And that's the same in some of our other restricted funds as well. So I say all this because there is still, as the board is very aware, a conversation going on in DC about, about the issue of additional federal stimulus and federal aid. And I think it's going, while the, while our general fund right now looks, looks stable, there are other major operational funds of the county that do not and where that whole conversation about revenue replacement using federal assistance is going to be a conversation that I think is going to be needed in the future, as well as will the conversation simply about extending the, the, the types of programs that we're currently implementing through our CARES Act funding. So whether it's rental relief, small business and nonprofit support, testing services and contact tracing, all of those types of things, those needs are not going to evaporate on December 30th of this year. Unfortunately, as of now, it's looking like the federal aid will. So we're just going to need to continue to work with our federal delegation and play as much of a part in that conversation as we can. I did just want to note a couple of things in terms of what the board is aware that the administration constructs a work plan every year. This is just a, a very small sampling of what that is going to look like for 2021. Again, this is, you know, maybe about 10% of what the work plan will encompass, but completion of the justice center treatment space expansion in 2021, opening of the new crime lab, finalizing a comprehensive housing plan, which was another element of the board's policy agenda, expanding our Office of Diversity and Inclusion, finalizing the transitioning to a web-based permitting system in our building department, initiation of the new community revitalization grant program, opening the Office of Family Voice, completing the, meaning the West End Garage adjacent to the FC Stadium, completion of the music venue on the banks and getting into the TLRC's review of the children's services levy. A huge amount, and this is, this is just a scratching of the surface of the things that are going to be going on in 2021, so a really exciting year coming.
Hey Jeff. Hey Jeff, I just, I just want to remind you to put equity along with diversity and inclusion.
We were just talking about that today and wanting to circle back with the board on what the true final name was going to be. So we just have to, we know that equity is in it, we just have to finalize that. So thank you, Commissioner, for the reminder. Really just talking about that today.
Yeah, and, you know, the way that, you know, we have to be careful about the order that we put those letters in.
Absolutely.
Like we don't want it to be die.
Right. Absolutely.
Wasn't it economic inclusion and equity?
Economic, I don't remember.
I think that's what it stated in the resolution. We'll just have to go back and see what, because we passed a resolution renaming the department.
I don't think.
We'll go back and take a look.
Yeah.
And just to summarize, Commissioners, very briefly, so your 2021 recommended budget is balanced for 2021. The five-year plan shows a sustainable fiscal path forward absent some of those risks materializing. The fund balance is healthy and exceeds GFOA recommended standards. And the county is able to sustainably make investments to improve the organization and community. So with that, I have a slide here. We have, we've recommended some dates for budget hearings, December 3rd and the 10th, with some additional discussion at staff meetings on the 8th and the 15th, with recommended passage on the 17th. Obviously, from this moment forward, the budget is in the board's hands. So the board can choose to change those if you want. And obviously we'll be waiting to accept direction on the board for changes in the budget and happy to work with all three offices individually to talk about strategizing different, different options and then working with the entire, the collective board in staff meeting on, on a final budget that we can pass later on in December.
So let, related to this slide, Commissioners, usually we have budget hearings out in the community. We obviously won't be able to do that this year. And we try to make them as accessible as possible so that people can weigh in on the budget. These two hearing dates, both on Thursdays, I do wonder if we, even though it will be virtual, I do wonder if we want to do one in the evening to make it more accessible to people that are working during the day. So why don't we circle back? What are, what are your initial thoughts about that?
I agree.
That sounds good to me, Denise.
Okay, so let's do at least one of these in the evening, just to make sure that people who are working during the day can participate. So we'll, we'll mess around with that a little bit and send something out to both offices related to these two public hearings. I'm assuming everyone concurs that they should be held virtually, although I think we would love to see people and see them in person. I just don't think that's prudent and I think the administration would recommend against that anyway. So, so anyways, we'll, we'll mess around with the times there and make sure that both of you are available as well as the administration for those dates at different times. Make sure we're all on the same page.
Great.
All right, very good. And comments related to the budget?
Thank you, Madam President. Just a, just a well-done, professional, clear, clear to understand, is strategic. It just focused on every area that departments were interested in. And I have to say again, forward thinking. And I don't think we need to take it lightly when Jeff was saying that we could be in a $40 million hole if we had not made the correct decision as it relates to that sales tax and union terminal and the sales tax. So I think that's a major deal and I'm sure it'll come up again about the sales tax and all that, was it the new tax and, and all of that, which it wasn't. But I, I think that's a major deal because I know when I came on in 19, we were in a $29 million deficit. We would have been, as I said, in a 40 million. Now we're structurally balanced and we even have some more in the coffers to be able to do some additional hiring, some additional strategies for the community in the county and being more inclusive with the agenda goals that we had. So I think it was a hard task for Jeff and John to come up with, trying to meet all the needs, in which we haven't met all the needs, but trying to meet as many needs as we could with all the departments that had requests. And I think, I just know they did a great job with it. And I'm sure we'll continue to, to look at it before we finalize it and get the input from the community to see how they feel about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I totally agree. Thank you so much for your hard work. You know, the, the, the expansion of the different offices, the, the creative things that we are doing in order to make our county the best that it could be. I just really appreciate everybody's hard work and like Commissioner Dumas says, you know, the creativity of thinking out of box and, and, and it's, it's such a joy for me to see from where we came to where we are now. You know, I, I remember us really being totally stressed out about the deficit. And so we've done the work to, to put this county on a more solid foundation. Though, you know, we got hit by this pandemic and we survived it anyway. So I, I believe that, that, that is just so indicative of the foresight and the wisdom with which the Budget Office and the, you know, Commissioners work with. And, and, and I'm just really proud of this and I thank you for, for all that you do.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just, I'll piggyback on the statements that have been made. So I too remember coming onto the county commission where we had so many constraints related to the budget because we just didn't have the revenue necessary to put us on some stable footing. And it was just a huge challenge. This budget feels so different from that. You know, it's balanced, it provides some stability for the workforce and for the, kind of the institution itself with capital investments here as well. Investments out into the 49 jurisdictions who we partner with. And there are partners all the way through this budget that helped inform it and will hopefully benefit from it. And it also, I think, recognizes opportunities that exist that now we can participate in because we have the ability to do that, albeit very small portions of the budget. I think it is a very forward-facing, partner-oriented budget. And I think as a county, that's exactly where we want to be. All in, within a recognition that, you know, our revenues could decrease given the. given the fluctuation of the COVID-19 situation in our community. And so we've got, you know, substantial reserves in the case that something turns south and we need to shore up again. And so I think it really hits the mark on all, on all fronts. And so I too want to, again, recognize the staff, recognize Jeff, John and the budget staff and all the staff really for your help in providing this to us. It's, it's really well done. So that concludes our conversation. Again, we'll have two public hearings related to the budget. Those dates and times will go to the Commissioners first to make sure people have the availability to participate. And then we'll send that out to the public. And then we'll also discuss these, the budget during our staff meetings. Right, well, let's just put it on, the staff meeting agendas until we pass it in the case that any Commissioner has something they'd like to bring or the public has something they'd like to bring to our attention. We then have the opportunity to do that. So let's have it as a standing item on both or, or all of the staff meetings until we pass it.
Sounds good.
Sounds good.
All right, very good. Thank you all. All right, that concludes our regular agenda. We've got a couple of executive sessions here. Is there anything else before we go into executive session, Commissioners?
I have nothing.
I have nothing, thank you.
Jeff, I assume we're good to go?
We are good.
All right. In that case, I'm going to move that we go into executive session pursuant to RC Section 121.22G4 regarding collective bargaining and an executive session pursuant to RC Section 121.22G3 to conduct a conference with attorneys regarding pending litigation.
Second.
Mr. Drehouse?
Yes.
Mr. Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Parks?
Yes.
And before we jump off, happy birthday to Commissioner Parks. His birthday is.
So.
Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have stopped the live stream, we have stopped recording. And let's take a look around and make sure everyone needs to be in before we lock. We have a telephone number, 513-455-4955. Can you identify yourself?
That's Joe.
It's, it's Joe Feldkamp.
Thanks, Joe. Okay, ICRC, I am going to remove ICRC, they're on the attendee list. So Gigi, I'm going to remove you from here.